Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
Microphones on, cell phones off for council members, please. Good evening, it's September 7th, 2021. City of Portland Common Council Meeting, and we will call this order after our public hearings. We have the opportunity for two public hearings this evening. First one regarding Governor's Executive Order 203, which would increase the number, and one of the suggestions and approvals that were received from council, charter change to increase the number of members on the Police Commission, expanding the commission from three to five members. While the public hearing officially open. Is there anybody present this evening to speak to our first public hearing? And there is nobody currently signed up, but if you have just arrived, or if you are unsure about the process, this is a public hearing on the city's opportunity to increase the Police Commission from three to five members. Is there anybody present to speak? If so, we ask you to step forward. Please use the microphone at the podium.
I just wanted to tell you I did what you asked me to do. Thank you.
Public hearing is officially open. Some might ask, why are we having a public hearing? This would necessitate a change to the city charter. Changes to the city charter do require public hearings and then a vote official approval by council. Last call, anybody present to speak? Potential in response to the Governor's Executive Order 203 to increase the Police Commission from three to five members. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll call the first public hearing closed. Our second public hearing. Opportunity to make Value Drive and always stop at the entrance to the Portland Junior and Senior High School. This public hearing is officially open. So the Portland Junior and Senior High School doing a three-way stop at the entrance on Value Drive. Is there anybody present that would like to speak to this? Second call, anybody who wants to talk about the potential for the intersection in front of the Junior and Senior High School to be a three-way stop? There is information in council's packet. There's been a study done. I believe this has been reviewed by the Public Safety Commission and has been discussed with the administration up at the high schools. Last call, anybody present that would like to speak on our second public hearing? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll call the public hearing officially closed. And I will address before officially calling the meeting's order, I do have in my hand a resignation letter from Councilmember Kat McCarthy. This letter of resignation is effective September 7th, which is today. So our quorum number typically when it's eight people on council, our quorum number is five. When we have seven, the quorum number is then four. As you can see, we have four council members present. So at this point, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise if you're able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, public comments. And we have two people who have signed up for the opportunity for public comments this evening. First person, Joey Maynor. And we ask people to please use the microphone at the podium, speak directly to council, keep topics limited to topics that the council can address. And also, three minutes in terms of time.
Thank you, thank you, big man. So I'm Joey Maynor, in the honor of Pivotalt. I'm still looking for a platform to work on. So I'm just here to ask if we could get me somewhere, talking to somebody so I can bring up some park in the city. You know, I do a lot of events out of town, but I need a place to come when I'm back in town. So, I want to raise here. Got a pretty cool thing, so. Private property doesn't work, just it hasn't worked in the past. So I'm asking the city if we can come up with some sort of, I don't know, we were working on it once before, so over seven years, I'm seven years in business, still don't have a platform, need one. I'm just, I'm asking you guys to work with me here and see what we can do. Fly out today. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. Second speaker, Jerry Rosario.
I know who's using that mask.
So, several years ago, I came to the front of the board and told you that you could not pass the four-year term change without, because you didn't get the information to the Board of Elections timely. And recently, I found out that this year, that happened a second time. So we are not going to have the referendum, I think, that you guys want to put on the board. And then, and then I want to talk about the county comptroller's report. I find it amazing that this isn't on the agenda and the aldermen aren't talking about what the report found. It's negligence, it's incompetence. We spend a lot of time talking about towns' chickens, but we spend no time talking about the corruption and the mismanagement in Portland. For years, I've stood here and I've talked about illegal tax assessments. And everybody, nobody listened. And today, we still have the same situation with favorable tax treatment for friends and relatives. And the taxpayers pay hundreds of thousands of dollars every year for the benefit of wealthy people. It's not the first time I brought it up, but I'm going to continue to bring it up until somebody makes a decision to change that. Mr. Tyler, I believe you might be the mayor next term. And at some point, you need to address this issue because Mr. Tobin has failed to do it for 10 years. The other issue that I've talked about consistently is selective enforcement of zoning laws. And for years, nobody listened, nobody cared. Negligence and incompetence. And now we find out that there's a judge in State Supreme Court that is telling the city to solve the problem of selective enforcement of zoning laws. I know, Mr. Tyler, that, you know, you've talked about protecting the neighborhoods and you've talked about, you know, doing more to protect the neighborhoods. And for years, we've been chasing some three unrelated goals. And it's not going to work, it can't work, because there are friends and relatives that have illegitimate CCOs that grant them the same use that you're trying to protect. Most houses on the Hill have more than three unrelated. And only some people get, you know, notes of violation, appearance tickets, et cetera. We've had no convictions for the three unrelated law despite many attempts. And, but more importantly, to the county comptroller's report, we have key city officials taking money, unapproved, unauthorized. We have illegal, you know, use of credit cards for personal use. We have malfeasance in grant accounting. And, you know, that hasn't made it to a report by the county comptroller yet. When is it going to be a public hearing for each and every alderman to tell us what they're going to do to stop this mismanagement from going forward? And when can we, you know, and if someone, if you guys aren't going to take care of it, when do you step down? I hope, Mr. Tyler, that this is a campaign issue for both you and Mr. Steve when you run for office, for mayor, because there are tremendous problems in the city of Portland and under the Tobin administration, they have not been addressed. It's got to change. And if I have to come here every two weeks and say the same things and start talking about tax assessments of the favor and talk about illegal CCOs, you know, I'll do it. If you need me to do it, I will. Somebody's going to do it, and it's going to be solved. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for visiting the city. Word reports, let's start with Mr. Tyler.
I'm a taxpayer in the city, Mr. Tobin. Don't forget it.
The big thing is, at this time of year, the students are coming back and we're all happy to see the students coming back. Everyone else at college is an important part of our community. And when they're here, they're an important part of our community. But I have had several complaints in terms of their behavior the last couple of weekends in the residential neighborhoods. I don't think they truly understand that in some of these places in residential neighborhoods, I wonder if they would, if they were back home with their parents, what their parents would be saying if they were, have to be, stay up until 3:30 in the morning because of a noise going on. So we're having some noise complaints with students, so hopefully it'll settle down. And I just ask the students, please, to remember, you are part of our community, but we do have a culture here where we call quits at a relatively decent time because people have to get up and go to work early the next morning. So that's, that's pretty much in the third ward.
Very good. John Bennett.
Oh, there's been a few, you know, concerns and questions that I've come across with the construction on Delaware. And then there was another one. The last one, the mayor and our DPW head, Nick Dovi, took care of that one. I was out of town. Most people, because I've walked Delaware quite a bit, most people have been very understanding. I think it's just a case between with a lot of rain and supply issues with not natural grid, the other one. The things are taking a lot longer than what was expected. So, you know, few neighbors are losing little patience. Once you explain it to them, they seem to understand. And they realize that once it's done, Delaware's can be a whole new street. Other than that, it's mostly been quiet in the fourth. But just to echo what Bruce was saying, on my way here this evening, as I drove downtown King Street, even though it's not in my ward, in front of, I believe it's a sorority house at Topkins and Bell Reynolds, must have been about 75 to 100 students going at it pretty good as far as how was the game with the bouncing ping pong into the cups? And some good music playing and other things. You know, so that's why I asked our city attorney, the chief was here tonight. Again, one can only hope that the spread doesn't happen. And one can only hope, as Bruce says, that our students, as much as we want them here and we love them here, that they start to understand what again could happen. And that's it.
The police are responding to that order. Thank you. Very good. Bill Carpenter.
All quiet in the sixth ward.
And Troy Babbitt.
Just a little update for people who haven't been by River Street. The Borotishner Building, AKA Apex, is coming down quite fast and they're doing a good job, so they'll get it cleaned up and move forward in something new. Other than that, that's all I have.
Very good. Following up on code, that was a property that has gotten a lot of attention from our code department over the years and in particular, as it changed hands in terms of ownership and we're able to help facilitate with new owners how to shut it down correctly and make sure that things are being done correctly. Hopefully, things are continuing to be done in the appropriate manner. So paying attention when we do have issues such as that in the city. And segueing into another code issue. And I do see, we do have a code officer who's spent a lot of time going around knocking on doors, making sure people are aware of what the city laws and ordinances are. So I'd like to in particular thank Roy Everett, who's done a tremendous job being out there. Move-in weekend, last weekend, myself, I've been out, paying attention, seeing what's happening in terms of gatherings. First weekend, when the college came in, the weekend of August 28th, was consistent with what expectations are. And for the most part, we've seen that. But it's important that when we do have issues or concerns, bring them forward and let's make sure that we're holding people to the standard that we expect of everybody in the community. And part of that, events or gatherings for 50 or more, we do expect people to have a COVID safety plan and to apply at the city to make sure that you are in compliance with what New York State requires and the CDC recommends. We are not limited, but we are asking people, if you're going to have a gathering, make sure that you have a plan. Share it with the clerk's office, with the mayor. And we've had a number of organizations that have done this. And in reality, I've heard not just from SUNY, the school district, and a number of houses of worship, houses of faith, but a lot of people who are taking this seriously. And as they are making their plans, even though they're not, they do not, well, under this, that they are in compliance. So it's hard thing to see that a lot of people are taking this seriously and are doing the right things. And it's not just individuals, it's large groups, small groups, but we all have to do our part. Sunday, this past Sunday, was the Second Annual Community Matters Fair over in Sogut Park. Had a very good time, spent some time underwater in the dump tank. And that was enjoyable as always. One of our county legislators, Susan Wilson, was there and also participated in the dump tank. Bruce, I thank you for stopping by. I believe everybody that was there had a very good time. A lot of volunteers from throughout the community. I know that there were several sorers and divers from SUNY Portland volunteering as well. So it was nice to get them out and about and involved and engaged in the community. And as we're heading into September, those basketball courts, John McNerney has spoken about it, but there's going to be some work coming. So it's great that people are able to enjoy the whole park and the courts as well. And looking forward to seeing the renovations when they come in. Minutes. Boy, I do have one more, two more things. Number one, can we have an executive session at the end of the council meeting? Update on contractual negotiations? Very good. And I'd like to read a letter of thanks for New York State Electric and Gas. So this is to Mr. Paul Paradine, who is the Senior Vegetation Manager. So on behalf of the City of Portland, Landscape Design Commission, and our city residents, please convey our thanks to NISIC for its many contributions in growing Portland's urban forest. NISIC's recognition of the many valued trees provided to a community has been essential to the city in enhancing our quality and character. Specifically, we want to thank Paul Paradine for his leadership in the redevelopment of former brownfield space on Charles Street. His efforts and NISIC's contributions transformed a rundown area into an attractive asset. And the walkway and carefully selected native trees are ones that residents and visitors can enjoy. Their continued maintenance of the area by NISIC is also greatly appreciated. So at a time when tree funds are not readily available throughout communities, NISIC's contribution of these eight trees to complement this spring's planting was key in fulfilling several property owners' desires for a tree. These trees are now enhancing city redways and two city parks visible for all city residents to enjoy. Lastly, our thanks and appreciation because the Arbor Day Program trees that NISIC has donated for several years along Charles, North Church, and specifically Clinton, as well at other sites, have been valued. And please let your company know that their efforts are recognized and make a difference. We wanted to thank NISIC because they have been an outstanding community partner in terms of helping maintain what we like to call our urban forest. Minutes, minutes from our last council meeting. Motion to consider last meeting's minutes. Troy, second by Bill. Any questions, comments, concerns?
I'll be in numbers.
Hearing none. All those in favor of filing the minutes as is, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, file the minutes. Number one, agenda item number one. Consideration of Resolution Acknowledged Received Letter of Resignation from Kat McCarthy Relinquishing Her Position as First Ward Councilmember. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Bill Carpenter. And short, I can read it out loud. Dear Mayor Tobin, please accept this letter of resignation from my position as First Ward Councilperson effective September 7th, 2021, it's today. I have truly appreciated the opportunity to serve the word and the community. Over the course of my time in office, I have met and worked with many individuals who are dedicated to having a positive impact on this community. I am grateful for the opportunity to have served in office. It's been a pleasure working for you, council, city staff, and the community. And I wish everyone all the best. That's from Kat McCarthy. Council discussion.
I'd like to just say, I'd like to say thank you to Kat. I enjoyed working with her. She always asks good questions. She's very level-headed, she's smart. She would often think of things that some of the rest of us wouldn't think of. It was a real positive addition to the council. So I appreciate working with her. I'm glad that she was, you know, had some time to throw to the community, but I certainly get, you know, what's going on with her now. So that's, I'd just like to thank her for her service.
I'd like to, I highly doubt Kat that you're watching this. But if you are, again, thank you very much. You are one smart, talented young lady. You're going to be very successful in whatever you do. Probably right now, she's either changing a diaper or holding her little baby, I think it's a baby girl, correct?
Yeah.
So she's probably not watching this. But I congratulate you and your husband. One of the greatest things ever in the world is being a parent. I know that it was my greatest achievement, having two daughters and raising them. Doesn't mean that it's all fun and games. And she'll learn that as the baby starts to turn from 12 to 13. So she's got some good years ahead of her before it turns really ugly. But in all seriousness, Kat, you will be successful in any endeavor that you do. And on behalf of the City of Portland, thank you.
Like Bruce said, Kat always come, came to the council meetings with good questions. She always served her constituents well. She always had a lot of, she fixed things in our ward and a lot of good work on her part as to what she did. I want to thank her for all her service.
Very good. Further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor accepting and acknowledging received the letter, please say aye.
Aye.
Sadly, aye.
And he opposed.
He accepted with regret, yes.
Very well put, I agree. Which brings us to agenda item number two. I'm going to preface this, the charter is very clear. And this has actually happened several times when the council has needed to fill a position. Couple times at the council level, a couple times at actually the county level in terms of the legislature. And the charter is very clear that in a vacancy, in the event of a vacancy, the position is to be filled by a member of the same political party as who the predecessor was. So we have an individual on the mass consideration of resolution to appoint Sam Adams to fill the term of First Ward Councilmember. And this will last until, effective immediately, September 7th, 2021, and to expire December 31st, 2021. And we entertain a motion to consider. Bruce Pedler, second. John Bennett, discussion.
I think it's a good choice. I think Sam will also add. I think Samantha will also add an element of diversity and she'll bring power and a skill set and she'll ask also questions that need to be asked. I think it's a good pick. I will afford to work with it.
I do have somebody else who's interested in hearing it, just came up today, so. Amy Boggs, like, chance for a position.
Resolutions. There's a motion, there's a second on the floor. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Carries. And if we can take a short diversion from agenda item two to number three, we have an appointment. We're not going to be in quorum without having somebody join us. So Sam Adams, if you could come forward. I'm going to ask you to raise your hand.
May I ask you to be nice enough? Yes, to the audience, if everybody wants to hear. Short points, if there's anything. I, Sam Adams, do solemnly swear.
I, Sam Adams, do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Councilmember, First Ward.
Of Councilmember, First Ward. According to the statute of liability.
Very good. Congratulations. Are you ready to sign, so we'll go there? And that makes it official? Are you ready? So I'd like to add my thanks to Kat McCarthy and the time that she's spent over the last three years. It's been a pleasure to work with her and did a great job, like I said, answering, asking questions, seeking out the facts on important topics. And very excited, Sam, welcome to the city council. You have four months and we're putting you right to work.
Thank you.
Agenda item number three. Consideration of a resolution to approve a change of title for a previously approved hire from youth service specialist to recreation supervisor at the Portland Youth Bureau. We have a motion to consider. Troy Babbitt, with second. John Bennett, discussion. And John McNerney. Do we have any questions for our youth bureau director, John McNerney?
That was, thank you. I had asked John, and I neglected to put it into the, I apologize, I was trying to put it in. Can you explain what we discussed?
It's a entry-level position. I'll give you a little background. You may recall that I spoke with you folks earlier in the summer about listing hiring freeze for our youth services specialists. We had a youth services specialist that took a job at SUNY Portland. And then after much discussion with my staff, my youth bureau advisory board, civil service, I also spoke with Mayor Tobin. We felt it was best to change and hire a recreation supervisor as opposed to a specialist. This is our management chart. Do you guys want to pass that around? So it's kind of a lateral position. The entry-level salary range is between 35 and 38.5. It was budgeted money for that position. And we have had that position vacant for a few months now. Anytime there's a vacancy in our department, we try to look at the structure to see what we can do because over time, things change. Some of you may recall Seth Scott, she was the deputy director. Upon her retirement, that position was never filled. We had the county clerk, Glenn Barrington. Upon her retirement, that position was never filled. So we're doing more interaction. We should have a management software program called Rec Desk. Everybody in the youth center and the recreation side had the skills to do that. Some of our youth center staff have taken on recreation programs such as the fishing derby, community garden. So they're doing some more recreational type of stuff. I included in your packets the two different job descriptions. They're very similar in nature. We're going to utilize this person two-thirds on the recreation side, one-third on the youth center side. Historically, the recreation supervisor position has drawn more applicants for interview as opposed to the youth services position. I'm not going to be around forever and I do a large percentage of the recreation program. So I think the best interest of our department in this future is to have an additional recreation supervisor. Both Andrea Cuddy Rosi, who is the current rec supervisor, and Heather Johnson, who's our youth services supervisor, both support this move, as well as my advisory board and civil service. So, questions? Want to give you the background information?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jack. Third was always, thank you. Council, further discussion. All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, and we go from 4-0 to 5-0 officially. First vote. Good luck on the call, John.
Thank you.
So that was number three. We are on to number four. Consideration of Resolution Approved Special Event Application and all other required applications for CMI Wellness Festival slated to be on Saturday, October 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in Courthouse Park. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Bruce Pedler, discussion. Opportunities for votes, there is an application in the folder, in the packet. Discussion, do plan if it is over 50 attendees to adhere to CDC recommendations. The actual event will be open to the public from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And they're looking for opportunities for people to engage in yoga, mindfulness, meditation classes, offer by yourself and other certified teachers for free. And there will be some other things potentially for self. I believe, though, no food, no beverages, staying away from that, those sort of items. Council, any questions?
They're going to have their COVID prevention plan.
Correct. There's a certificate of insurance included in the packet as well. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, five of them. Number five, consideration of a resolution to waive the fees associated with the CMY Wellness Festival. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. Nice that there's going to be some things that are free to the community and not charging somebody to give away valuable services. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number six, resolution to accept, recognize, and appropriate the following donations to the Youth Bureau. And we have donations, and these are all from Porch Fest. Joe Cortez and Molly Lane, Mr. Alex, Hair Fashions, and a sizable cash donation from the organization, from the group that organizes Porch Fest. Total of $1,930. We have a motion to consider from council. Bill Carpenter, second. Troy Beckwith, discussion. Thank you.
Yeah. I think all the folks associated with this deserve our thanks. You know, organize it, put it together, and everything that comes to us, and then donates. It's, that's one of the things I love about this community, you know, people, they do this. This is, this is who we are. So, you know, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number seven, resolution to allow a sound device permit on September 9th, 2021, for the Squeeze Juice Bar at 105 Main Street from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. DJ will play music to help celebrate the grand opening of the Squeeze in its new location. This is a business that has moved locations. We have a motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Sam Adams, discussion.
Thursday?
Yes.
And soon the DJ will be outside?
Yes. I'm not sure if he'll be inside, but music will be able to be heard outdoors.
I guess I'm just saying if it's inside, my head's even a little bit.
Amplified sound outside. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number eight, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute grant agreement with New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and all other contracts, documents, and instruments necessary to bring about the project and to fulfill the City of Portland's obligations underneath the grant agreement. Grant is an engineering planning grant for a potential aeration system upgrade project in the wastewater treatment plant. Motion to consider. John Bennett, second. Bill Carpenter, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And follow-up, number nine, resolution that the City of Portland authorizes and appropriates a minimum of 20% local match as required by the engineering planning grant program for the wastewater treatment plant aeration system upgrade study. Under the EPG program, this local match must be at least 20% of EPG grant award of $24,000. The source of the local match, any amount more than the required, shall be provided by the sewer farm. The maximum local match shall not exceed $4,800 based upon a total estimated maximum project cost of $24,000. Mayor may increase this local match using in-kind services without further approval from city council. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Sam Adams, discussion. I'm not going to increase without talking to Bruce Adams for his clarification. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And let the record reflect, that is a 6-0 vote. Jackie Chapman has joined us. Welcome, Jack. Agenda item number 10, resolution to cancel the loan agreement for Portland Rural Cemetery Incorporated and to forego collection of all advances and accrued interest made there own. There's a whereas, whereas, whereas. Let's just go right to the motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, second. Bruce Pedler, discussion. John, you want to give some background, shall I?
Go right ahead.
Sure. So Portland Rural Cemetery is right on Topkin Street. Many of us have been by there, and not presenting there yet, thankfully. But the cemetery, like many cemeteries, has experienced fiscal stress, and a couple years ago, they were really in a pinch, in a bind. And within legal parameters, the city was able to grant a loan of $8,000, and it helped this cemetery to continue to function as an independent body. For those that do not know, if a cemetery were to no longer be able to function fiscally on its own, then it would come under the auspices of the local municipality, the city. So there's a lot of reasons why it made sense for us to be able to partner with the cemetery, help them continue. They have an opportunity to be acquired by a group that listed here, and it is Forest Lawn, I believe. This is a group that manages cemeteries throughout western New York. The volunteer board from Portland Rural Cemetery has had a number of conversations, negotiations, and the organization is interested in acquiring Portland Rural, which would mean that they would overtake, carry the maintenance of the cemetery. However, they do have a concern about this outstanding debt. So a member of the board has approached the city about forgiving and foregoing the debt. So that is what we are considering this evening. Council, discussion.
Just actually, I understand, so by foregoing the credit, that it prevents the city from having to take over, potentially needing to take over the upkeep of the cemetery?
If the cemetery were to not do well financially, if they were in default, then it would be up to the city to uptake, overtake the upkeep.
Yes, Samantha. Forest Lawn is a non-for-profit organization that oversees, out in Buffalo area, I believe, eight to nine different cemeteries. They bring added manpower that Portland Rural Cemetery cannot afford. They started the process well over two years ago, because the agreement has to be approved by the New York State Attorney General's Office. The reason we reached with $8,000 at the time, Nick, you might be able to remember, but the possibility of the city having to take it over, and not necessarily run it, just maintain it. I'm trying to remember what Chris said, it could end up costing us per year.
I could.
I don't remember that figure, I'll step my head either, but I can probably.
Yeah.
It was pretty substantial.
It was pretty substantial.
Yeah. Might have been well over $200,000, because again, too, our labor cost is so much higher than what the proposed one's. The numbers, actually, when you look at the numbers of nowadays, the lack of full coffin burials compared to years past, so the revenue was considerably down. Again, Forest Lawn brings much deeper pockets to it. And they will continue with, I believe, one or two of the same old numbers as representation.
I appreciate the context, thank you.
You're welcome.
The Forest Lawn is taking the cemetery over? You said they're a non-profit organization, too?
I believe so.
So there's no way they can come up with the money to? Is there nobody to address that, or ask them, or?
Again, I have not been in discussions with, unfortunately, well-agreed here.
I mean, I think it's worth asking a question.
Yeah. No, I express concern.
And if I remember correctly, they had a large endowment fund, too, and I don't understand why they, it was explained a little bit why they couldn't.
Yeah, the endowment fund cannot be used for paying back any loans. The endowment fund is strictly to be used as a maintenance to the property after so many years as if the cemetery was to close. And that was another thing, I think the state does allow when cemeteries group, and again, it's been a couple years since I've been involved in this, but when they approve a grouping like this, I think they're able to, like Forest Lawn is able to take that endowment that the Rural Cemetery has, put it into one large pot to cover all the cemeteries. Portland Rural Cemetery had another lifespan, I think the lifespan of 40 more years before they figured they were going to have to close.
I just really think we have to reach out to them and see if there's any way that they would assume the debt, or, you know, not that we wouldn't write it off down the road, but I just.
No, it's a legitimate question, but the reason why the board brought this to the city was because the organization did not want, didn't want that debt, they didn't want to pay it, so.
I, again, I have not been in touch with Mr. Marshall, who's the board chairman and oversees the cemetery. I have no idea what the timetable is for Forest Lawn.
I mean, it's up to you guys, but I'm not going to vote in favor, you know, reach out to them first, so it's up to you guys, what's the rest you want to do?
The actual company itself, if you want to reach out to the actual company itself.
Yeah, I just had to reach out to them and see, you know, we're extended for five more years, or whatever the terms was, if it will. I mean, I don't want to deal the whole way for the cemetery either, but I think it needs to be pushed along, cut, you know?
I think I'd rather do, what the city has to do is maybe talk to John Marshall and ask if they have any funds at all, or what. Mr. Mayor, I have no idea if you've spoken to him at all, or if he just reached out by email to discuss this with you.
We did have a phone conversation, and if it's the desire of council to, I would recommend it, the desire of councils to ask one more time, then table this motion, and we'll revisit September 21st, gives us two weeks to, I can reach out to John, and personally I can reach directly out to somebody from the larger organization, Forest Lawn.
That's how I like to see a lot of them, see them.
I have no problem with that.
So Troy, you want to make a motion to table?
So.
I was not going to say, so. All right, all those in favor of tabling the motion until the September 21st meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's on the table. Agenda item number 11, resolution to adopt funding properties for the American Rescue Plan funds that the city has slated, while we have received and slated to receive in terms of next year. And if it's.
Mayor, I'd like, I'd like to move to table this, because I haven't really had a chance to look at this and digest and reflect on it, so if we just have a couple weeks to look at these numbers and look at it next week, or I mean, in two weeks, so I make a move, we table it.
Took the words out of my mouth, I was going to say, we'll have a discussion and not move.
I just had one, I mean, if you want to talk about it now, or if we'll talk about it.
I don't mind talking about it, but I don't want to go on a resolution, so I'll table that.
So how about, let's formally make a motion to move, put the resolution on the floor. So I mean, a motion for a resolution. John Bennett, second. Jackie Chapman. And now that it's on the floor, if you want to table it.
Can enter a motion to table.
Bruce Pedler, second. John Bennett. All those in favor of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it's another one on the table. Got it done? Very good. You always do. Let's move on to the next one, and we can, let me discuss a little bit if we can, but let's move on to agenda number 12. Item number 12, resolution authorized mayor to enter to an agreement with the SEIU, that is a labor union for the city. Shall I, you raise your hand, shall I ask for a motion to consider this before?
No. No, I ask that you withdraw it for another time. The state has issued a moratorium on interim foreclosure actions, so we won't be doing any foreclosures until next year, and we'll bring it back then.
So we don't want to table it, we want to just.
Consider it withdrawn.
Consider it withdrawn. So we will withdraw. Agenda item number 12, with council's permission.
Yes, sir.
And I suppose that's maybe good news. An oratorium on the interim process. The interim process is when a municipality would take ownership of a property and for the city of Portland, for years, taxes not being paid. There's a moratorium on the state's ability to take properties, and obviously, that is COVID related.
Sam at the end.
Lucky 13, discussion regarding the status of Parker School, proposal to turn it into an early childhood education center for daycare, Head Start, and early Head Start. Let me start, and if you don't know, my wife is the executive director for the YWCA, so there's a full disclosure there. The YWCA is the organization that is proposing to do daycare. CAPCO is the organization that currently does provide Head Start and early Head Start, not just within the City of Portland, but also the surrounding area, which does include the town of Portlandville, Village of Homer, and Town of Homer, I believe. There has been, hey, let's go way back. So when the school district decided to close two elementary schools, we formed the task force, Parker School Task Force, and this was made up, a couple people from city council, a couple from the county legislature, the school board, and three concerned residents that live very close to Parker School. So the task force went out and they spoke, they had a couple brainstorming sessions, they listened to people from the community about what they would like to see done with Parker. And then they reached out, they started thinking about ideas, and independently, this task force approached a number of organizations. CAPCO and the YW expressed interest, there were some other organizations that expressed interest, but there were some difficulties, either financially or legally, in terms of them being able to be involved. And at the end of the day, there was a recommendation that came forward that the city would take ownership of the Parker School, and then that would be turned into an early childhood education center. Early childhood, meaning pre-kindergarten, so under age five essentially, and as young, six months or younger. To its benefit, Parker has had a lot of work done to it. There was lighting upgrades, roofing improvement, and windows, I believe. And then there were some other things that need to be done in order for the school to be able to be appropriate for younger children. Thanks to our former Assemblywoman, Barbara Lifton, we were able to secure 1.1 million in funding to help offset that cost. We also run a grant, and through the regional economic development councils, we were able to secure another 200,000, so up to 1.3 million that could go to the conversion of Parker School from a traditional elementary school to an early education center. Sadly, when the pandemic hit, everything, we put the brakes on. New superintendent up at the district, Bob Edwards, we've had the opportunity to meet and discuss on a number of items, and this has been one as well, that has been their area of interest. Recently, within the last month, we've had conversations not just between the district and the city, but also with representatives from CAPCO and the YWCA about the desire to move forward, and the question is when and how. And the organizations, the leaders for CAPCO, Lenny Glennon, and the YWCA, Kelly Tobin, remember I told you about that one earlier, they are interested in moving forward, and in order to move forward, at the September 21st meeting, I'll be asking council to consider a resolution to move forward and discussion of an RFP for architectural and engineering drawings, and the ability to move forward with the planning process in terms of how that building needs to be rented. So potential to put together the RFP, put the RFP out, get quotes, and then move forward. Potential to acquire ownership of the building, we're going to continue to talk about it with the district. The district has been a wonderful partner in terms of being patient. Remember, council's credit, the support that you showed two years ago, makes a lot of sense, because we're talking about a large structure that is vacant in the heart of a residential area, that council, we've invested well over $2 million into Soggy Park, between the pool, the bathroom, the splash pad, the playground, and the upgrades coming to the basketball courts. We are doing some wonderful things to make our parks attractive and to make it really enjoyable to live in the City of Portland. So a large structure like that, an opportunity to do something with kids, great opportunity to continue to build on the momentum that we have. So, question for council this evening is, do you have questions, or is there information that you would like to see for the September 21st meeting, or is there any more in terms of updates to make sure that we are all up to speed? I'm going to look at the deputy mayor, John Bennett.
I personally do not even want to entertain this thought, the remainder of this year. One of my reasons is, this council and this mayor only have four months left. I think they should be held off until there's a new mayor, whomever that might be, whether or not, if it is Mr. Tyler, or whomever else might be running. Council will have four. Council will have four new members, at least four new members next year, might be more. I don't think this late in this year, my opinion in this is something that this council should take on. We can talk about grants that are received. You have to remember to receive those grants, there's always a matching amount. And so the school, these organizations are going to have to spend first and I know that they have some money, but the grants do not come in until after the work has been done. So it's not like all of a sudden this million something money in dollars is right there for them to use immediately. There's always going to be something that happens, something always happens. There's always some additional costs that happens. And I don't think it should be the responsibility of this council to maybe put a new council and a new mayor in a possible debt that is unforeseen. I just don't think that we should continue with this discussion this year at all. I have no energies for this. I applaud the people that worked on the committee. They had a tough job, but they made mistakes. It was clear early on that a religious organization could not be going in there and for an entire year, they had a plan to have the Christian school going in there. While it was clearly right in the dormitory report with the lungs that a religious organization could not go into that building. So, you know, there were mistakes made, but again, I do praise the people, the volunteers that were involved to that. My other concern, even though legally the mayor's been told it's not a conflict of interest. And I've always supported you, Mr. Mayor, but in this I do disagree. I do believe it's a conflict of interest. And that's another reason why I think this should not be brought up again until there's a new mayor in place.
Mr. Tyler.
I, John, I think John makes some very good points. However, having said that, I would still want us to sort of nudge this along a little bit and keep getting the facts on this and what we can and cannot do. It's been a while since we've addressed this. I think in terms of what would be nice, I mean, saying this brand new too, if you could put together, at least point us where those documents are so we can refresh our memories on the people involved and the money and the cost and where the grants were coming from, you know, so we can review that material again. The people, the folks that I talked to about this the first time before everything got shut down with the pandemic. The thing that concerned them most is they wanted to make sure the city wasn't going to be on the hook for, you know, X million of dollars down the line. That was, that was the thing that people were concerned about. And if they could be assured of that, people were in support of moving this forward and it's a great use for that building. You're right, it's in a perfect spot with the parks, it would be, it's perfect for kids. You know, so if there's a way we can move this forward, nudge it forward and keep, you know, keep it going. I know there's some other revenues that have been sought out that are working its way through the bureaucracy and I think, you know, we have to see where that's going to end up. But I wouldn't want to shut it down completely. I think John has brought some concerns that we need to address, but I'd still like to see us, see if we can nudge it along a little bit and see where we're at. Those are my views.
And I tend to agree with you, Bruce. It just was going great and smoothly up until March 1st. And then even the special election was, had to be canceled, correct? The special, to vote.
No.
Is that not correct? Was that, did that happen? That we would, that the city would become the owner?
No, school board, the school board had a vote during the school budget. That was what was voted out, school budget. When they put it out for their school budget, was that 2019?
But there was a special vote that would be happening in March of 20. Oh, that went to.
The city, it was that.
Oh, okay. And then everything just came to a complete dead stop.
No, it was a low voter turnout.
When you say over one, it's a very low voter turnout.
Always finding that rig up.
I was not aware of the, so it was under the city's jurisdiction when it was used by a religious organization?
School district territory, so Portlandville was involved in that vote, to residents of Portlandville.
Because it involves the entire district, it involves all the district taxpayers. But John, I'm going to push back on the low voter turnout because if this was the mail-in vote, it was actually much higher. So I can, I'm going to ask for feedback to make sure we get the correct numbers from the district in terms of how that vote was.
And I seem to recall.
The mail-in was much higher than the number of people that usually come in to vote.
Right. And the only reason for all the grants, this was a point that I remember. The only reason for the city owning it for a dollar was the fact that they couldn't receive the grants. CAPCO and daycare centers, et cetera, they, they can't use the grants unless it's through the city. But the city had no responsibility. They weren't renting, they were, is that part of what the whole?
In terms of usage of the property, you are correct. So with the money that is still owed on the building, that debt gets carried by the district, the district has bonds, they're paying down that debt. However, there's limitations in terms of the usage of the building. The early childhood, if it's owned by a government entity, this is an acceptable use. And what John was referring to, there was a third organization that was interested because it is because of the religious affiliation, they were not able to participate despite their desire to. So that eliminated one of the three partners. However, CAPCO and YW do have the capacity and do intend to go forward. And there's others, there's other benefits in terms of what they have planned and things that they may be able to do. With regard to the debt on the building, you are absolutely correct. The assemblywoman, Barbara Lipton's appropriation to the city limits, it has to be a municipality, it cannot be a nonprofit. So the nonprofits, this answers the question that someone might ask, nonprofits cannot receive that money, but it can go through the city. So the city would in essence own the structure with the intention, and this has been discussed, of selling the structure and probably at cost. Because what will happen is the groups that are running programs there will be, and they are seeking additional funding and looking at other, not just capital expenditures, but other things that need to be done. So the long-term vision would be for the city not to be in the landlord business with this property, but to help in terms of guidance and managing the property to make sure that it is converted appropriately and able to use the funds in the best possible way to keep the center of the city strong.
Yeah, I mean, conceptually, I think it's a good project conceptually. I think some of the details have to be worked out and also some of the things that we were delved into when we all got shut down. That's I guess what I was referencing earlier. Let's, let's nudge it forward a little bit, keep asking the right questions, figure out the details and if we can make it work, let's make it work. I mean, these organizations, they celebrate benefits of being in the same building. I'm seeing, they probably see even more benefits now after the year they've been through, of being able to share staff and share training and there's some cost benefits there for them as well, so. And I can tell from our little discussion here, some of these things were already, we've sort of forgotten some of these things. So it would be good for us to go back and review the, review the whole idea again and the reason for it and what's available. So that's, those are my thoughts, Mayor. I'd like to keep moving forward and we don't have to make a decision out of it anyway, but let's keep moving forward and get the facts and get the, get the get the ideas and get some of the details straightened out.
Yeah, I'm just going to go on.
And I'm just in agreement with that. Let's, let's keep it moving forward.
So I agree, I'd love to see, obviously being new, kind of wanting to do this far, to be part of the speed. But I'd also like to see, which may be part of those documents, is how many additional children we expect to be able to serve with this? If there's no additional, there's no main space? Okay.
Additional.
Okay, that's good to know.
Not right now, but there's space there. There's, there's things that could happen in the future, but John is right right now. And we all know childcare is an issue in this community. You know, you talk to the chamber, you talk to businesses, it's, it's an issue. We do not have enough quality, we don't have enough childcare. We do not have enough quality childcare for all the kids that need it. So that's something, let's not forget that either as we're moving forward with this. There is an issue there, there's a need.
So the contraction of childcare during COVID, it would be an increase over what is currently provided, but pre-COVID, the initial numbers are that it would be consistent with what was provided before, but it would allow the organization to provide for CAPCO, which has federal funding at a more efficient rate. And then for the YWCA, which has been funding their childcare program through other programs, it would give them an opportunity to break even. Which they're funding it through other childcare program and other things. And Bob Hayden has spoken about the economic, the economic benefit and the impact that it has in terms of workforce. And make sure that we pull out the information that was shared in it. Yeah, it's been over a year, so it would be good to refresh everybody's memory.
And I remember a lot of discussion on how it benefits to the community and because one of the goals of this last two years in session was improvement of Portland to draw young families to live in Portland. And, you know, and to be able to have this kind of facility that will draw young professionals. You know, that's, it's not only the school systems, it's also, you know, daycare is a big, big issue. And that was pointed out, if I remember correctly, quite a bit, and maybe in John's case, representations.
There's definitely no argument, it's not going to be an asset to the community. It's all coming down to not put a burden on the taxpayers and not ending up the building we can't use after quote unquote, hopefully never, but they go debunked or move out. I mean, we're not a landlord business, it's just got to get done correctly that we're, I mean, I have no problem figuring out a short-term solution, but we're not in the rental business. That's the tricky part of this whole deal. They already sold us on the project, there's no problem with that. It's just how are we going to get them, get them in there and not put a burden on the taxpayers and not end up with a building? That's what needs to be worked out and that's going to be a complicated thing. And I, you know, it's got to have to be spelled out very clearly to me to make, you know, the vote in favor of it.
I would completely agree with you, Troy, but complicated is not impossible. It's just, it needs to be complicated. We got to put our heads together.
And I'm not so sure that, you know, I totally agree with John, but they just, even to get this all, the ducks are all by them, I would predict it might be impossible. But I have no problem moving it, you know, like you said, keep it going forward, but I don't think it's.
Fair enough.
Further discussion. Harry, then we can move on to our last formal agenda item. Discussion on the opportunity for the city to collaborate with the county planning department to determine new ward boundaries based upon the recently completed 2020 census. This can include changing boundaries and potentially the number of council members. So this is for discussion. Little history, after 2010, the last census, there were some changes at the county level in terms of number of legislators, and that changed district lines for county legislatures. And they went within the city from eight county legislators to seven. And city council have been at eight council members and we are still at eight council members. So there was, I have reached out to a couple of legislators and said it would be very good for there to be conversations between the two groups. Meaning legislature and city council as we head into the tail end of this year and into next year about what the desires are and making sure that it makes sense because somebody can live in an area and then the next person over, you might have the same council member, but you're going to have a different legislature. Whether or not that matters, I'll leave up to other minds, but if there is a desire for consistency, then there should be some conversation there. But end of the day, the county planning department, they can and they're willing to help us in terms of drawing lines. And one of the things that will have to be done is some of the lines need to be shifted to make sure that the eight boards are balanced in terms of number of voters. So what that means is it could be as simple as a slight move here or there to make sure that the numbers are where they should be. Or there could be larger changes. And if we want to explore a couple of options, then that's on the table as well. Council thoughts?
Yeah, makes sense. You're on your two things, Mayor. One is making sure the boundaries are correct and then the other is.
At either end.
It's a transformational change, yeah, that's, that's a whole other topic to be discussed, but there's nothing wrong with having those discussions. I agree, that's, let's get it on.
Yeah. Two, discussion. Trying to think, David, the census show, the group, city.
Now, do you have thoughts on the table? From 2010 to 21? I'm not comparing the numbers. It's a good question.
Like this far, I prefer with the population of the cities.
Mikes. I'll check. Yeah, we're not looking for answers this evening, which is why it is a discussion item. And point of information, this is not something that would change end of this year. If I recall in a conversation with corporation council, that this would be a conversation towards into next year. And then Rick, would it be the next election? It would impact the next election. So in terms of anybody who is running for council or for mayor this, uh, mayor's in the city, but council in terms of the wards, that would not change. And there's this audible sigh of relief. That would not change, it does not make a difference in terms of the upcoming election.
I would be long gone. I would be very long gone, so.
You still want to say the votes, or no? All right, so council, I'll ask you to consider and honestly, it'd be really good for you to reach out to the legislators that you share boundaries with. So Troy, you probably have a couple of legislators that also encompass your ward bill and have a conversation so that there is good dialogue between the two governing bodies as we're heading closer into the end of 21. And make sure that we have a good idea of what they're talking about and make sure that we're comfortable with what options come forward. And if there's anything in particular that you would like to hear about, hey, what would it look like if there were seven wards instead of eight? Or five or 12, then make sure you get ahold of me and have a conversation with somebody from county planning for the next couple of days. Give them the opportunity to get the ball on. And I asked at the beginning, opportunity for an executive session, discussion of contractual negotiations, no action anticipated. Rick, am I covering the bases? Am I missing anything else that we need to discuss?
No, I have no anticipated action.
Chamber. Very good. So. The chamber, are that? Thank you, Brad. Let me get that. Adjourning into executive, into executive session with no action anticipated, sorry, but what that means is that we're discussing where we're at with a contractual negotiation, but we are not planning on making any decisions when we adjourn from executive session. So for those who may be unfamiliar, executive session, council can discuss, but they may not make, take any action. So may not make any decisions. Any decision-making has to take place in front of the public eye. All right, can I entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session and make sure its people are going to come right back quickly? John Bennett, second, Bill Carpenter, all those in favor of adjourning to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll be back shortly. We're going to room cross. Let me go first. This is unrelated to executive session. Like council to consider resolution approved, Chamber of Commerce's application for a sound device permit September 23rd from 12 to 7 PM. Sound device permit September 23rd. 12 to 7 PM. John Bennett, second. Bruce Tyler, discussion. All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Harris. Is there any further business to come before the council this evening? Troy Bennett.
Two dumpsters on the hospital.
Covid plan.
That made a recommendation of the, the vote department permit to refund their money, move them over to actually a dumpster rail, two of these spots to the right, two other dumpsters in the park and slats, there is to the right a dumpster now and two more that have not made, might be used by people. For a large park, we definitely have two spots for the downtown alley, until we come to the first, the trash facilities over there in the city park.
That's a discussion. And then we also refund their money to the county, which is a eight ward, and two spots to handle.
I think it's on, I think it's.
Where?
You showed, it looks like it's.
I need that set.
I'm not comfortable with anything tonight, because we told the people we weren't going to be taking any action, we came out of executive session.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, the thing of the sound device, I'm okay with that one because that's, that's not really controversial, I was okay with that, I didn't like it, but I knew that. This is something different, and I don't want to take any action on something we told the folks. We're not going to be acting as executive session, I think we need to live up to that.
I would argue that, that only, personally, I take that we're not taking any action on what we're going to executive session. Normally, at the end of a meeting, you always ask, is there any other agenda item that could be added, which I want to add another one, too.
I hear, I hear you, Troy, I, I'm just saying, I don't think that we made that clear to people, you know, usually we don't go to executive session, we add something. We said, and this is not related to executive session, I, I agree with you. I still think we should, we can, we can wait and deal with this in two weeks, in open session, when everybody's here and be able to see it on the agenda. That's my.
Wait, is there anything on that?
I just had a question regarding the chamber, the chamber, the COVID safety plan. This is on the 23rd, your declaration doesn't end until the 25th?
Yeah, we are anticipating receiving one from the chamber.
Which I did call the day after meeting, three weeks ago, until now, we need it by now, by this councilor. Or he said we would add it by now. Which I did relay to you later.
So back to Troy's question. Further feedback? Let me reach back up to the business owner and have a discussion and see what we could do. And is there any further business to come before the council this evening? Eric Dunn, a motion to adjourn, Bruce Tyler, second, Jackie Chapman, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.